Okay.
Okay.
All right, pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with military justice. All right, thank you. We're gonna approve in a minute. Motion to approve.
A second. All right, Ivan, it's yours.
Okay, the first one on the agenda is Blue Ridge Real Estate. This is the Lakeshore Land Development 2015. Excuse me, we've been working on this since 2013 trying to get this. We're stoked, and they keep filing for extensions. They got their all their NIPSYs permit and things like that, but they can't seem to come to an agreement with the supervisors regarding roads, sewage, water. I have a, it used to be four phases, now it's down to two phases. They reduced the acreage to sixty-two point three one acres. It was up to seventy-two, and there's fifty-seven lots, there's public municipal water and sewer. And on the, working with the Arrow Engineering Firm up there, we reviewed all our comments. They corrected all their zoning issues, but the subdivision and land development ordinance review, the phasing plan is submitted, still does not conform to a minimum of twenty-five percent of the total number of dwelling units. And per the Arrow, July tenth, two thousand twenty-five comments, the applicant has submitted a phasing plan, however, it's getting close to the twenty-five percent requirement, and a waiver has been requested from this requiring. Regarding the guarantee of completion of improvements, the applicant has to submit a improvement bond hundred, equal to hundred percent of the cost of required improvements. Per the Arrow comments, July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, all completion of improvements will be covered per the development agreement. Financial security cost estimates have been provided for phase one, and a waiver has been requested from this Solvo recording. Now, getting into comment three, prior to granting final plan approval for a major subdivision, the planning commission may permit the plan to be divided into more sections. And per the Arrow comment, review comments, financial security to ensure the proposed improvements are installed, maintaining the inspection fees agreed upon and have not been provided to date. And I noted all this Solvo sections. These Solvo requirements must be completed before final plan approval. I just pointed out this review item at the Arrow comment two above. And additional Arrow comments, items with the financial statement provided were difficult to verify due to the lack of clear representation on the plans. Examples are sanitary sewer manholes that are not labeled or depicted in the profile, sewer line lengths that are not provided in the profiles, or clear limits of phases for utilities. Storm sewer pipe inventory found on plant sheet eleven twenty-one appear to provide sizes and materials that are not found on the cost of items that are missing from the financial cost opinion should be included in the financial security estimates. Monuments, traffic signs, level spreaders, electrical elliptical pipes, inlets, sewer manholes, sewer manholes, contingencies and inspectors not included. Certification from the proper water power and other facilities also can be solved. They have to include will serve letters for all that. The ownership certification not signed, copies of the PennDOT occupancy permits for proposed road connection to PA State Route nine oh three and Lake Army Road not provided. And per the Arrow comments, the applications have been submitted, and the applicant should continue to keep the township updated with progress and correspondence from PennDOT. Water facilities require that the applicant must establish a water supply capable of providing domestic water use and fire protection that's not provided. And they did a feasibility study on the Big Bolden Water System prepared by Barry Isens and Associates. They own the wells, storage, wells, one and three storage tanks and the boost up pump. The housing authority of Midlake and Lower Woods owns the water distribution system. However, there is an interconnection between Midlake Systems and Enabling Blue Heron Water System, and it will appear that the improvements to the overall system will need to be provided before adequate water capacity, including fire protection can services project. They want them to provide an update feasible study with confirmation that the study is still accurate to show that improvements shall, will allow for adequate water capacity and fire protection in services project, and they should provide anticipated flow and pressure at proposed hydrants. I urge you to review and approve the fire protection proposals project, including hydrant access. Pointed out numerous reviews that several hydrants are beyond the five hundred foot max and distance between the hydrants, and the proposed hydrant attachment does not comply with the Kidder Township hydrant specifications, and the detail however is correct in the plans. And the applicant should clarify how they will end each utility at each phase for continuation. Again, the storage facility planning module is not provided, and they need to provide confirmation that the sewer is adequately sized for proposed usage. Sewer main material shall be identified in the plans, and they, again, applicants should clarify how they will end utility at each phase for future continuations. Under the preservation of natural features, there's a, they need a verification of the wetland delineation by the Army Corps of Engineers. Certification markers he not sign, the comments regarding still remaining, and improvement reads needs to be signed and reviewed by the solicitor prior to final approval. And the original signature should be placed in the plan. And again, I pointed out that in reviewing above subdivision believes we found several areas of noncompliance with the requirements of the Kidder Township Land Development Orders, and wishes to point out the above noted conditions of noncompliance represent several substantial nonconforming conditions, those in the Kidder Township subdivision and land development ordinance that precludes any favorable recommendation or approval of this subdivision at this time that's submitted for review. And the Kidder Township Planning Commission, at their planning commission meeting on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, recommended additional plan approval based on the Arrow review letter, leaving all review requested. However, the request of waivers from the requirements and specific requirements noted in our review of the Kidder Township subdivision land orders remain open. And I pointed out that we are providing the above comments. The Kidder Township Planning Commission supervises applicant in the engineer response to the project with revision that the above noted conditions are addressed and/or adequately mitigated in order not to set an uncontrolled precedent regarding compliance with the requirements of the Kidder Township Solvo for future land developments in Kidder Township before final plan approval. That's review, they gotta watch how they proceed in case they don't set a precedent and other people come in and say, well, you did it for them, why can't you do it for me? That was submitted just for their review. Next large one.
We don't need to take any action on that.
Yeah, just send it out for review.
Okay.
So it's still a motion to forward the comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a motion to forward the comments.
I got a motion?
Yep, sure, I'll make a motion to forward the comments.
I'll second. Oh, Paul there?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, it's another, another project, the Eagle Hospitality Hotel out there in two oh nine. This is another one we've been working on for three years, like an eon, but. The, I, the comments, reading receipt of correspondence from Design BLB regarding addressing our January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five review comments of the above referenced lot line revision minor subdivision land development. And now please find below a list of our original comments and responses from Design BLB. Comments from Design BLB are shown in bold italics. All comments from our January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five review, which have been deemed satisfactorily addressed by Design BLB have been removed, i.e. missing comment numbers. Comments from our January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five review that have been duplicated from the land development and subdivision reviews have been combined. And basically, they, they need a sewage facility planning module required for the sewage disposal system, and it should be forwarded to the PADEP. Development plan approval shall be conditioned upon DEP sewage planning approval, and a copy of the approval letter when obtained should be invited to Franklin Township Supervisor. Their responses Franklin Township and CCMA have been, have approved the EDUs for the project, and the sewage planning mail has been submitted to the Franklin Township Supervisor. And again, the approval of the soil erosion control plan, sedimentation control plan, and the DEP NIPSYs permit for this stormwater discharge is associated. Far because the proposed project would exceed the one acre minimum. And again, their responses, plans have been submitted to the Carbon County Conservation District, and an administratively complete letter has been received. However, once the permit is approved, the permit and approved plans will be forwarded to Franklin Township. Again, I pointed out the certification ownership not signed, certification of the surveyor not signed, the certification shall be provided for regarding the water table depth and potential for affecting the water supply for the proposed on that well. Their response was test well drilling has been completed, and the well documentation shall be revised prior to plan approval. They're gonna need a development agreement between developer and Franklin Township prior to final plan approval. Guarantee the installation of said improvements in accordance with township requirements. And they're saying a development agreement shall be executed prior to final plan approval. Again, all land development shall be served by an adequate water supply, and developers should provide evidence documenting said adequacy. And they're saying that the test well drilling has been completed, and they're gonna provide well documentation prior to plan approval. Capacity of the well shall be certified by a licensed well driller to be adequate for the use of the proposed use. And again, test drilling has been, drilling has been completed, and again, well documentation shall be invited. The firefighting adequate and reliable water source, and there, I pointed out that Franklin Township Fire Chief should review the plan before the approval process. And her response to his review documents were sent to Franklin Township Fire Chief on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The hotel will have a sprinkler fire system, and the plan does not specify either a pressurized system or identify a static water source. And I pointed out this document has not been fully addressed. And they're gonna have to provide a recreation area or a cash contribution, a little dedication. And again, I pointed out that we just reviewed this and make sure you do it and make your own determination.
All right, we got a motion, that we're just at a plan review.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we get into new Indian Hill Properties, land development, and lot combinations. This is the old Buck's Sporting Goods of Franklin Township. And I just happen to be out doing the site inspection, and they're out there working already on it. Where's your permit? Didn't have any. They went out and. But basically, what they're doing is they're taking, they're not creating any new building lot footprint. They're taking the existing Buck's Sporting Goods to the first floor. The second floor was apartments. They're, they got at the whole thing, and they were gonna put storage up there, but they don't have the access in the back for their storage. Okay. The type water or sewer systems is existing on lot storage, and they're replacing with a new tank in the front and new drain field, and there's on lot water. It's a former commercial tract, moderate severe conditions exist, and the plan submitted does not conform to Franklin Township Land Development Orders. It does meet the zoning requirements for the lot size, and the property being subdivided is located within the R two zoning district. Existing and proposed uses of the property are nonconforming mixed use, changing from retail and multifamily residence to business office and medical equipment. Refurbish the medical equipment. Again, they're gonna need a storage facility planning module, and the lot line adjustments, subdivision, they pointed out what they're gonna do, they have that, combine and get a new tax parcel number and lot number. Again, applicant submit documentation regarding water table depth and potential for affecting the groundwater supply for the proposed on that well. They're gonna need a sewage facility planning module, and following notes pertaining to the proposed onsite subsurface sewage disposal and onsite well should be added to the plan. And will no way certify, certify that guarantees the suitability of any lot for the installation of the subsurface sewer disposal system. The PADEP planning conducted as part of the subdivision plan approval process is for general suitability only, and a sewage permit will be required through issuance of any building permit. And individual lot owners must apply to the township for the sewage permit, and wells and sewers disposal systems shall be instructed in accordance with current standards of PADEP. And again, the granting this approval, the township is not certified or guaranteed the feasibility of installation of any type of well the sewer is supposed to. Payment with and travel away with the Vivian Road or Indian Hill Road Township four sixteen I've shown, and they should revise it to the correct township route number. They have it on the plan, four thirty-two. I pointed out some plans that were recorded, you need original signatures, and they'll need improvement construction guarantee, continued ownership and maintenance of the improvements agreement, developers agreement, the easements, the drainage easements may require easements for drainage purposes to grant to Franklin Township. They're gonna need stormwater drainage controls, water supply and sewer systems. One thing they don't have is a second, secondary sewage treatment facility shown. Off-street parking, total square footage of the existing building is not shown in the plan. Required parking shall be based on manufacturing, industrial, and general commercial, and for office space. The number of spaces required by these sections shall be calculated based on the total area of billing as shown in the plan sheet, see with one. And the, they don't have any, any proposed usages for any employee. There's no way of computing that from what they provided, so I pointed that out. Sliding and galairs, they could provide a plan so that the area that the adjoining property owners are not affected, and the. Seating on the storm ordinance, the, they have it correct. The, it's a chapter ninety-three class, yeah, classification, it's a cold water fish, migratory fish. The actual receiving water is based on the maps or an unnamed tributary of Lehigh Canal. They have it going into the Po Poco Creek. Signature block of the order should be added to the sheet, property owner signed, and they need a financial guarantee for the municipality for the time of installation and proper construction of all stormwater managed facilities, and I would recommend, again, another review.
That's one of the nonconforming use, only continuing the exact same kind of nonconforming use.
Only lost their approval.
At least I have not a precedent.
I questioned the mouse here and that too, and the other zoning.
All right, can we get a motion for a plan review?
I'll make a motion to forward the comments.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now we get to the easy ones. The Robert, Robert Botcher and Linda DeStano owners of Penfors Township on Pleasant, Pleasant Valley West. Basically, all they wanna do is combine three, the three lots into one lot, and meet the minimum lot size requirements. The only thing that's missing on the plan is they have to certify the ownership and sign the signature block and sign it, sign the significant notch of features, and they're still working on their zoning ordinance out there. They haven't approved it yet, so that's doing their, I recommend the plan. Just based on.
All right, can I get a motion for a plan, plan approval?
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Noah Schaefer, minor subdivision, it's lower Towman'sing and Towman'sing Township. I reviewed it per the Towman'sing Township Land Development Order, because the home is going to be built in Towman'sing Township, and the remaining lands are down in lower Towman'sing, or it's all brush and wood it covers. It's a forty point five one three five acre tract. Lot one is four point four six one zero acres. And I pointed out again that the minor subdivision is located both in Towman'sing Township and lower Towman'sing Township and proposed lot one where the development proposed is located in Towman'sing Township, therefore, the plan has been reviewed per the Towman'sing Township Land Development Order. Does not conform as submitted to Towman'sing Township subdivision Land Development Order. It does meet the zoning ordinance, and land, plan those landowners to provide copies, note not shown in the plan. Again, they're gonna need cash contributions, I think it's five hundred dollars for the two new lots, listing of any deed restrictions. Survey monuments and markers found to be set not shown in all lot corners, copies of the proposed draft, these not provided. Driveway clear sight triangle not shown on label in the plan. Driveway clear sight triangle notes should be provided in the plan, the required sight distances, and the, there's no construction proposed by the applicant or the latest minor subdivision. I pointed out that invigilable lot owners, a lot one should be made aware of the requirement of an approved sedimentation erosion control plan, thematic by the Carbon County Conservation District. Property, property line monuments and markers should be placed on per requirements, and monuments and markers not shown, and I would recommend conditional plan approval.
All right, can I get a motion for additional plan improvement approval?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, sir. Next one is Sam Blone. Blone Plaza, this is right next to Dominale's, between Dominale's and that Sunoco gas station up on nine oh three. If you drive by, you can see a pond in the front. Just pull out the names here. We're in the wetlands. On the property. But the plan has, as I mentioned, he's staying away from these, but he still has to get Army Corps certifications. Here's the plan, he's just putting it right in front. But there are issues with it. It's a nine point nine four seven two acre. Construction of a five thousand two hundred square foot multi-purpose building, paved access drive, access aisles, parking areas, on lot water and sewer, stormwater management controls, and a soil erosion control plan, on lot water and sewer, and it's vacant, brush and wood covered land track, moderate, moderate slope distance throughout. On-site investigation of portions of the tract reveals several areas of wetlands and a pond located in the front of the land track. No other, no other visible areas where plant were noted. It does not conform the minor plan requirements of the Franklin Township Land Development Orders, and the, does meet, conforms to the minimum lot size of the zoning ordinance, however, containment of intense states is intended to develop owners to instruct the multi-purpose building. Multi-purpose building is not defined in their section, their definitions, nor is it listed as a permitted use in zoning protection two forty, attachment one point one. It does include retail stores or shopping center, and which may include a building occupied by multiple retail stores, and they're a permitted use in C one, how they commercial district. I pointed out the applicant, developer should clarify the use of the proposed building to determine the correct type of use. He's also providing twenty-six parking spaces, which includes two ADA handicapped spaces. No employee parking spaces are provided, and the applicant developer should provide the specific building use and computer required parking spaces for their zoning ordinance. Each new lot shall include both a primary and a reserved septic location. Both locations shall be determined by the Township Sewerage Force and Officer, and again, there's only one area. Yep. It's the only one area right behind the parking area. Doesn't show, there's no, I pointed out, there's no sewer mains shown, no clean outs, dosing pumps, septic system or whatever. Permits or approvals may be required for activity within or adjacent to a water, a waterway from the State Department of Environmental Protection, Army Corps of Engineers, and FEMA. All areas within fifty feet from the top of the primary bank of a perennial creek, natural pond or pond, should not be occupied, excuse me, by any following, a building vehicle parking. And this, from the pond, things parking area, the one parking. From top of the pond here, the top of the bank, these three or four parking spots are within the fifty-foot area. We're gonna have to review that also. Each use shall provide off-street loading facilities, and there's nothing shown on off-street loading. The surveyor certification not completed, certification ownership not completed, proposed location is secondary alternate source disposal sites not shown, signature authorized me Penfors Township and staff to enter upon inspected site not completed, natural features of these trees, ages, caliber not shown, and the applicant should request a waiver. Preliminary plan shall be completed by the following supplementary data unless the Penfors Board of Supervisors, upon the advice of the township engineer has determined that submission of such data is not necessary. Preliminary profiles typical cross-section specifications for the proposed sanitary sewer water system are not provided, and they, DMP operation and maintenance plan has not been completed on the plan sheet, two copies of sewage planning module not submitted, and if the subdivision or land development includes wetlands or hydrated soils, the applicant should admit either a written statement from the Army Corps of Engineers that the area does not contain wetlands or copies of permits for proposed activity from the Army Corps. Seeking a waiver from the traffic impact study, the location size and invert elevation of all sanitary water distribution systems on location of manholes, proposed septic tanks, cleanouts, septic lids, dosing pumps, et cetera, including final profiles, cross-section detail, specifications and power sources proposed, sanitary source of water distribution system not shown provided, copies of the highway occupancy permit not provided, they need a subdivision improvement agreements, performance guarantee. Copies of the highway occupancy permit not provided. They need a subdivision improvement agreements, performance guarantee. Again, they're going to need a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit from D E P. And no lighting plan is provided. And. Point for design engineer certification to be signed, existing needs to be invited. And proof of recording on the plan, Lehigh County should be revised to Carbon County. And again, I just. Submit this out there for the review.
All right, can I get a motion for a plan review?
So move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thernak Holdings. This is in Packer Township and Mr. Thernak is cleaning up all his properties up there. He farmed them all, he just wants to. Clean them up and. This one contained. I think it was twenty twenty one lots that was reviewed and approved way back when. But the lots they never, never sold, therefore they never issued the tax party. By the town, he wants to get rid of them to buy them in two lots. Lot one, lot two. We came the agricultural field in lot two, who will be going over to. And he'll be taken to its all forest and woodlands. And he just wants to add this to his property for hunting. Uh, the drawing scales doesn't conform to it and he's requesting a waiver and I believe we would have no. Uh, objection to the approval waiver request. The owner's affidavit is not signed. And I pointed out to him, he, we had one last month. We had Thernak Graver. While lot determination. It should be Thernak Holdings, they'll see. He said, put it on the plan notes that he will make that change. And I would recommend plan approval.
All right, can I get a recommendation for a motion for plan approval? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last one is the Hallahan. State, this is out on the road going into the old town, the home up there, off the cemetery. Uh, Lorry Town Road located one ninety one Lorry Town Road. And basically they want to clean the state up. Theresa Nice lives at one ninety one on the corner of the track. Lot two is the other daughter. However, when you look at a county tax map, there's a home on there. And there's a tax parcel number on it, but it's the lease parcel. So they're going to remove that tax parcel and just give them the whole lot. And then lot. That's lot two, lot three is going to be retained in agriculture. Lot fours is the factor subdivision across the road and that's going to be, let's all avoid it. Okay. Under the plan review. It means all the, it means the two acre minimum. And again, the drawing scales and he's requesting a waiver from that permit. Dimensions of all existing structures should be shown in distance of existing structures of the lot line. It does show some of them. He doesn't have them all completed and I would recommend.
All right, can we get a recommend a motion for a plan approval?
So move.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One is the Summit Hill Water Authority Bridge Replacement. It's a funding grant application. They're updating the. The. To the bridge, you can't, you can't handle a two year storm event or the construction vehicles. Uh, when they're, they're doing the well up base. And I recommend it to, but it complies with the. Carbon County Greenway and with comprehensive plan, so. So I just recommend that we. Recommend, thank them for providing Carbon County. Our office the opportunity to view comments. The Hyten Borough. Subdivision. The their. Their district regulation two eighteen dash sixteen. And their zoning ordinance. Code enforcement laws are very ice it. It came to them were a current issue that have been observed since March of twenty twenty three. Uh, since the adoption of the orders, they have noticed that many zoning related projects are being reviewed as land development submissions. Although only interior modifications are being proposed. And I went back through two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four and what we have now and not one of the plans that submitted. By the Hyten Borough qualified as internal modifications. They were all either land developments or lot combinations and I. I called down there to talk to Mr. Dewire and I pointed that out to him and he agreed. Uh, basically what happened is there were some buildings down on First Street. And the, they submitted it to the planning commission down there. And then they said, no, you have to come in with a land development plan just for. You know, upgrades to the outside, the inside. So now they're going to permit medical clinics and professional offices. As conditional uses in the R one residential low density residential district. And R three residential high density districts. And they're going to permit multi-family dwellings as special exceptions. In the R two residential medium density district. R three residential high, high density district, C one office neighborhood, commercial district and C two. Central business district and C three, uh, there's commercial highway district. That's eternal thing for the Hyten Borough. We had to review it anyhow. Got a write to know request from. F.
Early.
Yeah, I talked to her almost every day. Write to know about the Mura land development down there. And I, she wanted to know everything that's in our planning files and there was over four hundred and fifty pages of. Documentations and basically all she wanted to know was to. A copy of our comments and the agenda on our official con, our planning leatherhead. So I've been trying to get this. There's an email I sent to Jennifer. Way back when and evidently she hasn't gotten this. I, I resent it this morning and she still hasn't gotten it. This is on. Two eighteen I sent it. Uh, the last one is the. Bowmanstown Borough requires for specific uses relating to mobile manufacturing homes. And basically they want us. Uh, put this in as a use. In their, in their. Selling ordinance. And as in the section one article four, they're going to, they're putting a definition in. And they want to put it in, what is the R one district, so. Had no issue with that and that was it.
Also, I have. Time for the municipality to apply for grants, so I have four. Uh, requesting letters in regard to the D C E V small waters and storage program. Uh, the first one was Lancer Colby of Dorn Water Authority for well pump and pump house replacement. Alimenting for pipelining. Stumpford for front through stormwater and Netgown Water Authority for West East Water System. Just basically let them know that they, that they're in compliance with our. And then two for D C N R, B two, P two grants. Uh, one was for natural land conservation planning. And the other one was for Netgown Columbus Park. And there's more coming in, I think that they're at the end of that one. So sometimes they come in right at the last minute.
Hello? All right, can I get a motion for German?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Take care, Dan.